Okay, it's five thirty. I'd like to now call the meeting to order. Will we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, this is Monday, August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, regular school board meeting. This is a meeting of the school board for the purpose of conducting the school corporation's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. Public comments are limited on the agenda. There will be a time for public participation as indicated by Agenda Item Number Five. The Board receives Agenda Item Information and Rationale for Administrative Recommendations for their thorough review before each meeting. So, two point O media, we have no media signed in today. So that moves us to two point two, which is a special presentation.
Guys, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I know a lot of you guys already know us, but we are After School Central. My name is Shawna Balziger, and I am the Director of Middle School Programming for the Center for Wiltley County Youth. And today we have some very special people with us. So we have Brandon and Emily, and they are both SERV students, so they are both in high school. And they choose to come to After School Central multiple times a week and volunteer their time to be mentors for middle school students, and we are so grateful. So you're going to hear a little bit about their perspective on After School Central, as well as some different things that they have to share. And then we have Isaiah, who actually just started in February. And he is in charge of our After School Central program here at Whitco, as well as our Ground Zero program, which is a high school program that we are really excited about. So you'll get to hear from all of us tonight. And then at the end, if you have any questions, I'll come back up and talk a little bit about those. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brandon. I've been with the program for five years now, including my seventh and eighth grade year, and now into my junior year. So last year, we had roughly over seventy middle school students, which isn't as much as we normally have, but it's very close to the same. Our high school leadership team has nine students this year. The requirements for this team were even more than normal, what we normally have. But, which also included leading games, doing announcements, running our concession stand, and being a mentor to the middle schoolers, and more. We went on multiple college and career field trips per month. We went to places like Grace College, Huntington University, the Bowen Center, Parkview, Whitley Hospital, Sweetwater Sound, Manchester University, and we did a career field trip to our own organization, Center for Whitley County Youth. We had three family events: one open house in the fall, a Christmas party, and a spring information meeting about finances. These are always our favorite events because we get to meet siblings, parents, aunts, uncles, and more. It helps us build healthy relationships with the whole family. And my favorite memory I had from the past school year has to be probably just hanging out with all the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students that we had, the new sixth graders that came in and everything. So, yeah.
Hi, guys. Like she said, my name is Emily Rush. I'm currently a sophomore, and I've been involved with the After School program since I was in sixth grade. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about our summer events. So After School Central offers a lot of day trip events. Some of those in which include Lake Michigan, some pond parties. We'll go in Fort Wayne, and we'll just hang out at the malls, walk around. We get crumble cookie a lot. We even just hang out at the brownstone and just play games and paint and stuff. Super fun, by the way. So a lot of, so all of the SERV students this year, this summer, had the opportunity to go on what we call the adventure trip. It was a trip, a five-day trip to Tennessee. And in that trip, we just got to do a lot of fun things. We went zorbing, even like a giant riverball, rode on a hill. We went whitewater rafting. We played a lot of hide-and-seek, so that was fun. I think, me personally, my favorite part was the whitewater rafting. I'm really scared of drowning, obviously, but being in the water was super fun. And like, if you have gone before, you'll know it's like, you've got to trust the people in your raft because like, if they don't paddle, you're going into rocks, and that can be kind of scary. And so I think that just really helped like with our team bonding because some of the SERV students there didn't know each other as well, and so that was really cool. Also, just kind of getting over like the fear of like, you know, that, because you know, it's very safe, like accidents can happen. So I just want to go over a little bit on why these trips are super important for not only our SERV students, but also our students as well. A lot of students would not have the opportunities to go on certain trips like these, even if it's not like a week in Tennessee. Just like getting to go to the Fort Wayne Mall and just being able to hang out with students their age at like, just painting or like going swimming and stuff. Not a lot of kids will get to. And so I think it's really cool and important that ASC invol- offers these summer events just because it gives us all a chance to bond outside of that like, hey, homework, hey, we're playing games, hey, let's go do this. Even though that's super fun as well, I think the summer events are just super cool, and I'm glad that like, me as a SERV student and also our students get to do this. So, yeah. Thank you.
Like Shawna said, my name is Isaiah. I joined the center in February. I graduated from Grace College in May, so I'm fresh out of college and ready to attack the, the career fields and stuff, so I'm super excited to be here and be working with the center. My part of the speech or presentation is goals moving forward. So Ground Zero is in its second year in Whitco. And so we are just mainly looking to keep getting our feet on the ground, become established. We'd love to see a rise in participation. Our ultimate goal is just to create a safe place for high schoolers, that they can go get a free meal, hang out, feel seen, loved, and just give them an opportunity to hang out with each other. We are also excited to have all the sixth through eighth graders in one building. As you guys know, this has never really happened in Whitco. So we get to now have all the Pearson sixth graders down with us, giving them an opportunity to come to After School Central, which was not really possible before due to them being, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes away. So that's super exciting for us and something that we're definitely looking forward to and glad that's happening. Unfortunately, we lost our grant through the Indiana Department of Education starting this year. However, we have raised the money to function normally this year. So that is huge. We don't know exactly what this is going to look like moving forward, but we are pursuing the grant again and hoping that we will get it back for this next year. Other than that, we are pursuing other partners and foundations and community members to help fund the gap for now.
All right. Do you guys have any questions, or would you like to hear from our students anymore, anything like that? Okay, awesome. Yeah, thank you guys so much. Thank you to the students. They did a great job. And if you guys ever need anything from After School Central, our information is on this last slide, so please feel free to reach out if you need anything. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Moving on to three point O, which is reports, principals and directors' reports. First one is Pearson Elementary School, and we have Dr. Chorus.
Yep. So I've been covering as principal, interim principal the last few weeks. It's been fun, to say the least. From back to school night, we had eighty-nine percent of families attending, which was great. It was interesting to see the fourth and fifth graders not realize that they were moved because we moved classrooms, and now they're on a different wing. So that was fun to say like, no, you're on the, you're on the adult side now, so that was great. It's been fun just getting my feet wet again as a principal. Definitely, definitely a faster pace than what I do here in central office. It's a, it's a new exhaustion, but we're loving it. So the teachers have just started with their new curriculum, Ready Math. So we're trying to get them rostered and get that done. Getting some beginning-of-the-year assessments started. We've started PBIS. So explaining to the students, this is how you come into the office if you're sick. This is how you pay for, or you get in line to get your lunch. And all those procedures that take forever but pay off in the end. So we have taken two days to really just teach those skills that they might have forgotten over the summer. So I've heard, I've heard the nurse's speech about four times today, so stand behind the line, that's all you need to know. We also welcomed some new staff members. We have two out on maternity leave, so we had two new teachers come in. That was great. A couple of instructional assistants have joined us, but thankfully, our turnover was super low over there, so that was minimal. But like I said, it's been great filling in over there. So we do have interviews next Tuesday for principals. So we've created a committee, and we'll get that ball rolling very shortly.
Okay, thank you. Next is South Wiltley Elementary. Mr. Full softball?
Thank you. We have started our professional learning team meetings with each grade level. And in my board report, I said we, we coordinated those so that our teachers could also work with Pearson. So South Wiltley and Pearson teachers can, they have a common time if we choose to meet together. It would likely be like a Google Meet or something like that, but that we have the same planning time so we can work together. This is time for us to look at data and grow as professionals, so some professional development that we can do. And that's an important time for me to be there and also our instructional coach. So we're thankful for that time. We're looking forward to the common assessments that the district is rolling out as that's going to give us data and starting points for our students and ways to, as a parent, I want to know what my kid needs to work on, where they're good at, and you know, the starting point. So we want to know that, and that's going to, going to help us with that. We're excited about the curriculum mapping that the, the teachers did with Dr. Carroll prior to the school year starting. That's been helpful, give us direction too. And then we've taken the idea from Dr. Chorus of customer service to heart. We're working at making positive contacts with families prior to a second call that might not be as positive. So we're working at doing that, and I hope that that, that helps. But it, we want families to feel comfortable and to feel welcome, so we're, we're working at doing that to let parents know that we're a teammate with them in helping their student to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Chris Benedict with the Whitco Career Academy.
Good evening. We have fifty-six senior students that are participating in work-based learning in capstone situations, which is in-field experiences outside the school, or during the school day in their pathway that they have completed. So that's about seventy-four percent of the students that are eligible to do so. So it's a high number that we continue to grow each year in that particular program, and excited about that opportunity. This year, twenty-five, twenty-six school year, we are capping off our manufactured program. That is starting now. I want to give a big shout out to Jade Hollenball, our precision machining instructor. Did a great job all summer long of meeting with the three representatives from Paragon, Amatec, Micropulse, and also CNA Tool, because those, those people are sending instructors in every Tuesday to work with our students during that program. Just the amount of hours and, and stuff that he has put into planning programs, planning curriculum, planning projects. Just want to thank him for all of his efforts to get that program off and going. WC has welcomed thirty-three students from surrounding school districts, as well as our homeschool programs to participate in CTE courses. Our partnership with Troy has been in existence from the beginning of WCA. We just newly formed our Whitley County Collaborative with Columbia City and Cherabusco. Those numbers then kind of break down. We have eight Troy students that are here this year, thirteen from Columbia City, seven from Cherabusco, and then we have five homeschool pathway kids that are here, for a total of thirty-three total. That's outside of our district that are coming to take classes. And then finally, on the twenty-ninth of August, we will be hosting Southwest Allen County. They are wanting to come over and look at our CTE programming and kind of maybe mirror a little bit of what we do and, and get some ideas from us of what we're doing and give them a tour of our facility. So I just think it's unbelievable that we have, we've met with now Northwest and Southwest two megas in the Fort Wayne area that are wanting to come and see what Whitco's doing in CTE. So it's, it's exciting time. Any questions?
Could you give me the numbers again on where they come from?
Troy is, we have eight from Troy. We have thirteen from Columbia City, seven students from Cherabusco, and five homeschool students. Yep.
Thank you. Next, from the Whitco Junior High, we have J.D. Mauer.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm also going to give Mrs. Longenbaugh's report as well. But I'll start with the junior high. We are very excited to be nearly fully staffed. We still have a current open English Language Arts position for seventh grade. However, eddest staff has provided us with an experienced guest teacher who is currently building rapport with students and working very hard. And we should have him for at least the next three weeks, hopefully a little bit longer. The junior high staff has continued to work out a few bugs with the, the new building and a few what I call logistical issues. But this is really a blessing in disguise. And this is what I've told staff, and this is what I've told students because without the immediate need of technology and without our projectors and without our TVs, guess what? We get to talk to each other. And this has been great. Return to that whiteboard, it used to be a blackboard for me, but return to that whiteboard. And you know what? Let's do some activities where we, we get to know each other, and we can start returning that joy and building that culture. So this is that time where I call it a pre-game. You know, we're getting ready for that learning, but we're, we're gaming up to do all the learning that we need. But we're, we're setting those expectations now and building that culture. And I've seen a lot of joy. I've seen a lot of smiles. I've seen a lot of laughter as I've been in classrooms, and that's what it should be. And I'm happy and excited to sustain that throughout the year. Students are able to go outside Friday during our advisory time. We haven't really talked much about that advisory time, but if you don't know, that's a, that's a planned period. That's our eighth period, where students get to experience a multitude of not only academic experiences, but they learn, they help grow as learners in their individual experiences too. So we're trying to grow them, their character and their integrity during that time as well. We felt that was a very important piece, the middle school, that we'd like to continue and work on. I'd like to give a special thanks to After School Central. You just, you just saw them. I had asked them to come in on the first day, and with, with all the transitions, that sixth and seventh grade coming in, and even though we didn't have lockers, to just help them get from class to class, to be that, that extra caring person who could hold their hand or put their arm around them, or just tell them where to go. And that worked out wonderfully. We didn't have one lost student. So, so that was great. We really put them to work, and they pushed into classes, and they talked a little bit about their program, and it was, it was truly great. So that's, that's pretty much my report on middle school. For the, for the high school, we are fully staffed. Teachers spent the, the last few days building those positive relationships. We have three goals for students and staff this year. The first goal is positive influence. And what that means is we're going to make good choices, we're going to be kind, and we're going to step up as leaders. Students also heard today the second level, which is high achievement. And what that means is taking academics seriously, setting goals, and asking for help early. And lastly, students heard today outstanding culture. What it means, everyone contributes to making the school a place where people want to be. As you see, that theme continues throughout our building, that theme of building culture and being a place where you want to come every day. And Mrs. Longenbaugh and I are on that same page together collectively to restore that culture. Lastly, we are building a master calendar for the entire building that will include all school activities and events for the year to help us with clear communication, not just in-house, but also outside house. All right. That's, that's my report. Thank you.
And next, we have Barry Singray with Athletics.
Good evening. Fall sports are officially underway. All of our high school programs have had their first competitions or scrimmages, and we're excited to see them out on the field after a full summer of lifting weights and doing workouts and playing travel sports. So excited to have everybody back and excited to be back in competition. All of our fall coaching positions have currently been filled, and all of our contracts and schedules are confirmed and updated on Event Link. And we'll continue to utilize Event Link anytime we have changes in communicating with parents. Our fall feeder program updates, we'll continue to host our youth football league and our youth volleyball leagues. Coach Tyree also added a tackle football team for fourth and fifth grade, and we have close to twenty kids on that team. So excited about that and seeing, seeing some growth and some changes after, after a couple of years of flag football. And then our varsity cheer team is also putting on a cheer camp. And all that information has been sent out to families and shared with the elementary schools. Facility updates, the main gym scoreboard project is finally on the schedule for October nineteenth, and we want to keep it right there. Because if we can get it done on the nineteenth, we're not going to interfere with volleyball, and we're not going to miss the start of girls' basketball season. So excited to get that underway. I want to thank Jennifer Ebbinghaus and all of the Booster Club volunteers and everyone that sponsored and participated in the golf outing. They put on another great event for Whitco and for the athletic department. So just want to thank everybody involved. And then lastly, all of our fall recognition and senior night dates have been set, and those will be shared tomorrow or Wednesday with everyone. So they were on the newsletter, but we have a little more to add to that. So all of those dates will be shared and sent out, and I guess that's all I have. So if you have any questions.
I have a comment about the tackle football program for fourth and fifth. That's been a long time coming, and I'm glad to hear it. I know when my kids came through school, the first year we went to Manchester, and then years after that, went to the Cosgascow County Pee Wee Football League, which was pretty big. There was probably three hundred kids playing. But it slowly dissolved because Northwood ended up starting their own program, and Tippi Valley started their own program, and Wawa Sea started their own program. And there's the reasons that they did it. And it's, I'm, I'm happy to hear that we were able to, to finally do that. It's, it's the right thing to do.
Yep. We want to get them all wearing Whitco from day one, so.
Yeah, that's the next thing that happens, right? You meet friends there, and then you decide, oh, I want to play for Valley because that's who I played with when I was at the Cosgascow Pee Wee League, so.
Yep.
And since it dissolved, I'm not sure where our kids were going, if they were trying to infiltrate some of those areas, going to Columbia City. So it's nice that they can stay closer to home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Aronda Snively, Director of Operations.
Good evening. I'll start out with transportation. The first day went really well. It's always a challenge that first day, just making sure that all the students get on the right bus and nothing unforeseen happens, and everything went very smooth. I was very pleased. We have three new drivers in the seat this year, so that made it extra challenging. And we had one returning driver this year. Deb Shoemaker has decided to come out of retirement and come back to drive full-time. All of our routes are filled. We do have a few on the longer side. But fortunately, we have two applicants at the beginning stage of training. So hopefully, maybe around fall break, we'll be able to split some of those routes up and redistribute some of those kids so that they aren't on the bus so long. We did get another, a new trip driver from Wawa Sea. I believe he's George's neighbor. Dean Abbott, he has come on as, he'll do band trips mainly. He has students in our school, and they are involved in band. But he has said that he would be willing to sub on days that maybe we are in school and Wawa Sea is not in school. So baby steps. You know, you get them in and you just keep pulling. We are still looking for a permanent driver for the Athletic Shuttle, so we're piecing that out right now, but we're still hopeful that somebody's going to pick that up. The maintenance side, big shout out to the custodians. They've worked their butts off this summer. I think our, our buildings look really good. They've been cleaning, deep cleaning carpets, floors. They've been trimming bushes. We've hauled in a lot of mulch. And they've just done a fantastic job of getting our buildings up and looking nice. We are going to replace several water fountains here at the academy. They'll, they'll be out tomorrow to do that. We're working on several roof projects. We're hoping for a total replacement at South Wiltley Elementary and then partial at the high school, and then the bus shop will get some roofwork as well. I still have one full-time custodian position open at the high school that I'm looking at starting interviews again for that. Dean Weigand update, I'm so glad to have the majority of that done, and I'm, I'm so happy to see students in that building and teachers in that classroom. It just makes my heart happy. The lockers are scheduled to be installed starting on Friday. So that'll be about a week-long process, they think. They'll do weekends and evenings so they don't disrupt the instructional day. New era is still working on a few of the door access points. I'm still working with Schinkel and Whitman on the punch list items. Signage, we're still waiting on signage. It did come in, but it was not right. So they are going to reprint those signs, and hopefully we'll get those soon. And dancer will be back over fall break to do the final refinish on the trazo floors. I don't know if you noticed it, they weren't, they didn't have that shine that they normally do, and they just ran out of time. So they'll be back over fall break to do that. And we ended up with about twenty to twenty-five extra plants that wouldn't fit out in the courtyard. And so we brought them up here, and we're going to find a new home for them, hopefully on this camp, campus. So we've been busy. Any, any questions?
So I have seen on Facebook, a lot of people have raised concern stating that some of the the children on the buses to the Career Academy are forced to sit on the floor because there's not enough seats. Can you confirm if this is true or not?
We did confirm there were like three students on one of the shuttles, the academy shuttles. They hadn't been assigned to a bus yet. They get their assignment once they get out here. I think they had gotten on with their friends. When we left, they were in a seat when the driver looked, but then as he looked on State Road Five, he did see a couple of them sitting on the floor, so there's not any place on State Road Five to then pull over to correct that, but once we got out here and we reassigned them or assigned the students to a bus, and then we had gone out then the next day just to make sure and count and make sure that everybody had a seat and the bus weren't overflowed, so yes, that has been corrected.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Next, we have Carrie Walmer with Special Services.
Good evening. This summer, our administrative team participated in a couple trainings. One was specifically on Section 504, and another one was on public agency representative training with an emphasis on school law and best practices. Our special education staff had required eight hours of training for the new IEP platform that they rolled out this year, so they participated in that in preparation of the transition. In the first week of school, we have approximately new, thirty new special education students with approximately twenty students that have moved out. Upcoming priorities, we're looking at planning professional development to use during those days where we have PD time with our staff, and then also, I'll be preparing for the Part B grant window, which opens next month. Any questions?
Thank you. Next, we have Sierra Arnett with the Whitco Early Learning Center.
So, it was a really good start to our year this year. Our enrollments are going pretty steady. We're currently running on full ratios in our ones and our twos room. We're adding new kids to the preschool room pretty quickly. We're almost reaching our full enrollment in our full-day preschool room. Over the summer, we utilized a grant for the snacks and meals for kids from ages zero to three. We got that from the Community Foundation. This kind of helped our parents come in, because having that gap over the summer where we're closed makes it hard for parents to want to bring their kid here, so that helped because opening the summer, they, a lot of our enrollments went up because of that. Looking ahead, we're going to be working with the curriculum director to add reading curriculum that's actually used at the elementary schools. It'll focus on the science of reading and phonemic awareness. This will better prepare our kids for kindergarten when they are ready to move up. And then we have a training coming up for Minds and Emotions for our staff. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Jamie Carroll's curriculum.
Good evening. I'm thrilled to share that next month, I'm going to be giving a data presentation that digs pretty deep into data K-12 here for the district, but there is one piece I want to share with you guys that I feel like is hot off the press. The iRead three scores were released, and this year, Whitco's iRead three scores were eighty-seven percent, which is up eight percent from last year. You're at seventy-nine percent, so I know, it's like a round of applause. I know, very exciting, very, very exciting. It just, it's a testament to the hard work, dedication, and commitment of the students and teachers and all staff here, so pretty exciting news to share. I couldn't wait another month to share that. So, in addition to the curriculum work that was highlighted in my board report, we are gaining some momentum with our curriculum framework, so we have sent out a survey to all K through five teachers in regard to curriculum framework norms and what we want to say is tight in the district, meaning if it's happening at Pierston Elementary, it's happening at South Whitley Elementary, to try to align both of our buildings. So, I have sent out a survey to K-five teachers, getting feedback from them, and then I will work with the principals and the coaches to tighten those norms, solidify those, and then roll those out to teachers so that we all know and you guys know what our expectations are for curriculum. In September, I will be meeting again with each grade level for a half-day curriculum mapping meeting. I had a blast over the summer. I met with all K-five teachers. We curriculum mapped. We focused on the first nine weeks for grades K through two, and then grades three through five, we focused on getting our maps built out through the first checkpoints, which are the iLearn checkpoints from the state. So, right now, we are in good shape with our ELA and our math, and we'll be meeting again in September to continue to build those maps out. And the last thing I wanted to share with you is we're excited to kick off our beginning of the year diagnostic testing, so in grades K through five, they will be taking, which is new this year, the iReady math diagnostic and the iReady reading diagnostic. In grades six through eight, they will be doing the iReady math, and then in grades six through nine, we're going to continue with NWEA assessments one more year. After that, we're, hopefully, we're going to transition to iReady for K-eight in both reading and math, and hopefully the PSA T for our freshmen. So, that is all I have to share. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Matt Buchanan with Technology.
Hello, how are you? Technology, we've been very, 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 very busy. There are a lot of big pieces in technology, and all the big pieces aren't fully put together yet, so Andy and Justin have done a fabulous job of staying customer-focused, understanding, listening for needs, and responding accordingly to get teachers moving, to get students moving as smoothly as possible with the tools that we have. Some of the solutions are eighty percent, and then we're following up with the additional to get them all the way there. We've got a new employee, Drew Benedict, for Power School, and he has hit the ground running. I'm very thankful for him. He picked it up very quickly, and by the second or third day, I could tell if I was stepping in, I was slowing him down, so just go, Drew, you got it, so that's a big plus right there. Our phones were, I'm going to say, were ninety-nine percent installed and working just fine. There are a few one percent where this isn't working quite right, and we're still learning how to do it, but sometimes just a phone reboot is the solution to the problem, so that's the best. Our vendor has been very responsive and very helpful, and I think it's gone pretty well overall. Printers, printers, they have all been updated. We have two that are causing us a little bit of issue right now, and those are at Pierston Elementary. We worked with Conica Minolta, the actual vendor of the printer, to see what needed to be done, this next step, because we tried everything, and tomorrow is another meeting, which I think we can clear some things up, reset some config files, reinstall some things, and I think those will be up tomorrow, so you know, knock on wood that it'll be going, but those teachers over there have been very patient with us, as I know how important being able to print is. Let's see, I've identified a couple cost reduction programs or opportunities. One is with Power School, that's, you know, we're going to stick with them, so it'd be nice to move into a longer-term commitment with them, which reduces the annual increase per year. That'll be a nice save right there. There's an opportunity with Chromebook repairs, and also, we're in the last steps right now with CrowdStrike, our endpoint detection, having the state pay for that, and when they pay for that, they'll also move us up to a higher-level package, which is, you know, pretty awesome to have that. We're in the process right now of converting our Windows devices right now over from the old plan to the new plan, and that concludes this month, so I'm pretty excited about that. Let's see what else here. Yeah, so as we're looking, just as, you know, things pop up, you know, what did we miss, right? Because we lost our Power School person, which, you know, that person essentially did quite a bit, and we're creating checklists, creating work instructions, technology procedures to make sure that next year and moving forward, that those plans be easily communicated, because, you know, I want five years from now, ten years from now, we all, you know, may not be here, who knows, right? But I want it to be a smooth transition, and so that our teachers and our students have a really good experience. Are there any questions?
No. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, four-point-O is donation and grant update. Dr. Corrus?
Yep. We have thirteen hundred dollars worth of hardwood lumber donated to the academy from Holmes &amp; Company in Columbia City, so thank you for your donation.
Okay. Public comments on agenda items, we have no sign-ups for public comments regarding agenda items, so we'll move on to six-point-O, which is the Business Reports and Consent Agenda. So, six-point-one is the minutes for the July first special session, the July sixteenth work session, the July twenty-first regular meeting, and the July twenty-eighth special session minutes. We have accounts payable and receivable for August first and August fifteenth, as well as claims for August and monthly transfers. Financial reports, the revenue report, the appropriation report, the fund report, and the financial report, and then we have extracurricular activities for Pierston for June and July, South Whitley Elementary, and also the high school. And then six-point-five is a list of employment actions. So, may I have a motion to approve everything listed in six-point-O?
I move that we accept the Business Reports and Consent Agenda items as presented.
Second?
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing them will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your right hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. Seven-point-O is new business. Seven-point-one is the adoption of Exhibit A Resolution Determining the Need Project. May I have a motion to approve?
I move that we adopt the Exhibit A Resolution Determining the Need Project.
Second?
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? We will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your right hand.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Seven-point-two is the adoption of Exhibit B Resolution Approving Form of Amendment to Lease and Authorizing Publication Notice of Hearing on the Lease. May I have a motion to approve?
I move we accept the Resolution Approving Form of Amendment to Lease and Authorizing Publication of Notice of Hearing on Lease.
Second?
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? We will now proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Seven-point-three is the adoption of Exhibit C Resolution Reapproving the Building Corporation. May I have a motion to approve?
I move that we accept Exhibit C Resolution Reapproving the Building Corporation.
I second it.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Seven-point-four is the approval of field trips. May I have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the field trips as presented.
I second it.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? We will now proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. We have no old business tonight, but we may have some miscellaneous administrative items by the superintendent. You have any?
Just a few. I just want to say thank you to everyone. The first few days went off very well. It was just nice to see kids back in our buildings again, and I had said to my staff, it's very lonely in the summer when you work all summer and you don't see those smiling faces. It does get a little bit old, so I'm so happy that we're up and running again, because this is why we're here. I also want to say thank you to our students, Brandon and Emily, for coming tonight from the center and representing us so well. It's shocking when kids come and speak that well, and they're only juniors and seniors, and I think, wow, good for them, so I'm excited for them and to see what they're going to do this year, but thank you, and I hope everyone has a great year. That's all I have.
Okay. Ten-point-O is public comments on non-agenda items. We do not have anyone signed up to speak on non-agenda items, so moving on to eleven-point-O, this is the upcoming meeting, so take note, please write it down. The next work session is Wednesday, September seventeenth, in the Academy Tap Room at five-thirty. There's a public hearing on the proposed amendment to lease on Monday, September twenty-second, in the Academy Lecture Room at five PM, and then our next regular meeting is Monday, September twenty-second, in the Academy Lecture Room at five-thirty.
And I would like to say that these are on the front page of our website. If you just scroll down past the new, you see me, keep going, and you'll see them on the left side, so it'll have the latest board meetings monthly as well.
Okay, with that, I'd like to ask for a motion for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
I second it.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any final discussion? Seeing them will proceed to vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.